Good evening. Welcome to the Edina City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 20, 2022. My name is Kevin Staunton. I'm one of the council members. I'm sitting in as acting mayor for Jim Hovland tonight. He's away. Welcome. And before we get going, I just wanted to remind folks that for the past couple of years, we've been doing this both remotely and in person. Glad to see people in the council chambers this evening. But there's also folks who are attending remotely, and we welcome them as well. There will be a couple of times during the meeting this evening where you can participate in community comment and then in public hearings, and we welcome you to participate during those times. And if you are attending remotely, we will first hear from people in the council chambers, and then after that, we will see if there's anyone available online. And you can see now on the screen is the way to call in if you want to participate either in community comment or in the public hearing. And you would dial 1-888-504-7949. The conference ID number is 976-976. And you press *1 to speak. So we'll repeat that information as we get to community comment and to the public hearing. But we welcome anybody to participate, both in the council chambers this evening and remotely. So with that, let's call the meeting to order. And Clerk Ellison, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson here. Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Acting Mayor Staunton.
Here.
In absenture, Pearson-Hovland.
Thank you. Next up is a pledge of allegiance. Please join us.
... of the United States of America to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up is approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any changes recommended from staff?
There are no changes.
Okay. Any from the council members?
Uh-uh.
All right. So I'd take a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Councilmember Jackson. A second from Councilmember Anderson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Now we're at the community comment portion of the meeting. And this is the time when we invite residents to share issues or concerns that are not on the agenda this evening and are not scheduled for a future agenda. Individuals should limit their comments to three minutes and try not to speak on the same issue in the interest of time and topic. So I would welcome anyone to come forward. We do have the podiums on either side unless there is something that you want to show the council with an overhead projector, then we can get you a portable microphone and you can stand in the center console. There is a light system on the podiums that will give you green light while it's okay to speak, yellow light as it's time to wrap up, and then at the red light, we'd ask you to conclude your remarks. So with that, I'd invite anybody in the council chambers to come up and share what's on their mind. Come on up. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Kathleen Lott. I live at 6212 Hillside Road, and I am here with a petition for the city council to reconsider the prohibiting of ice cream trucks. And we are currently living in Eden Prairie while our home is being remodeled. And this whole summer, every Tuesday night at 8:00 p.m., if you drove down Howard Lane, you would see everybody out in the front yard waiting for the ice cream truck, from my elderly father that just sat and enjoyed the general splendor to the little tiny ones and their scooters and the kids everywhere, and even the dogs were playing. And honestly, we've only been there for three or four months, but I can name every single neighbor and their dogs and their kids because of this weekly ritual that really, quite frankly, took me by surprise because we've never had that, at least on our block. And tonight is actually the last night of that, so we're going to go right after this. But my son said, why don't we have an ice cream truck on our block? And I said, well, let me do some digging. So we found out that it's prohibited, which doing more digging, found out that it did make sense with not wanting our brick and mortar to go out of business during COVID. But ice cream, to be fair, isn't a meal unless you've had a really bad day. And so I am here with the names that I was able to collect from the community in hopes that the council would reconsider ice cream trucks. We often, almost every year, miss the block party, and it kind of has been a weekly block party, and everyone's out, and it just makes for great community, especially because I know we all kind of get stuck in our backyards. But it brings everybody out to the front, and everyone is mingling, and it's just been great. So I wanted to present this to the council, and that is our request, that you please reconsider that.
And is your colleague in the back on board with this?
He is. It was his idea.
All right. Well, that's terrific. Thank you, Ms. Lynn.
He's here for support.
Appreciate it. You can give the petition to the clerk, and we appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
You learn something new every day.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in council chambers who would like to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. Hi. My name is Helen Ferraro. I am new to Edina. I live on Blake Road, and I guess I wanted an update on the construction project on Blake Road. It has become very unsafe. I work actually in construction. There is no safe path of travel for students who are walking to the bus stop. The contractors are rather rude. One of my neighbors was cursed out by a contractor when she asked them if they could move their trucks. They just park wherever. I had to call, I guess, the rep for the city projects to ask for a flagman to be put down at the south end of Blake Road because there was literally no way for people to figure out how to go up what's now become a one-lane road. The route that we were given, a letter was mailed out to all the residents, the route that we were given for detour has now been closed after about two weeks. And so we're kind of on our own to figure out how we are to safely access our home. And it's been quite frustrating and is rather unsafe. So I guess I'm just looking to the council to provide some guidance and hopefully address this matter with the, I don't know if these are city workers or if it's a contract with a construction company, but that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in and sharing that this evening. We typically, at the next meeting, will respond to the comments that have been raised, but I'm sure that you have raised some issues that, in the meantime, I'm sure Director Milner will be following up on to make sure we're not behaving in the way that you're describing, or if we are, that we're correcting it. So thanks for bringing that to our attention. I was almost late to the work session because I decided to try and come that way, and then I had to circle back and go the other way around. So I can appreciate the dislocation that's caused as a result of it. So, all right. Anybody else in chambers that wants to share comments? Anybody online? Okay. All right. Well, we'll close community comment, and then, as I mentioned, City Manager Neil will now provide any responses to previous community comment.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of council. At our September 7th city council meeting, we had three speakers at community comment. Two were there to discuss their lawn restoration concerns on the Melody Lake project. Director Milner was prepared, and he talked about and addressed their concerns at that meeting. The third speaker that night really just wanted to thank the council for listening to people, and that was said.
All right. Thank you. All right. So next up is adoption of the consent agenda. This is the portion of the agenda where we approve a number of items on one motion, and there won't be any separate discussion unless any of the members want to pull the agenda item off. Are there any agenda items we should remove from the consent agenda? All right. Hearing none, I'd take a motion to adopt a consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The consent agenda is adopted. I think I can dispense with identifying who's making the first and seconds for the rest of the meeting since we only have two people who can make motions. Next up is special recognitions and presentations. We have one this evening, and it is a proclamation declaring September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. And I will read that proclamation now. Whereas it is the privilege of all Americans to commemorate the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuance of a proclamation by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, the city of Edina, of Edina, Minnesota hereby proclaims the week of 17, September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week and urges all citizens to study the Constitution, reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities that privilege involves, and reaffirm the ideals of the Constitution. And it's dated this 20th day of September 2022. And we have a couple of people here to recognize, to receive the proclamation, and we had a chance to take a photograph together beforehand, and I'd ask you to come forward and identify yourself for everyone and share some thoughts.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry.
We'd be standing here all night waiting for me. My name is Diana Lynch, and I'm with Monument Chapter, Daughter of the American Revolution. I want to thank Acting Mayor Staunton and the Edina City Council for celebrating with us this week. As he said, the U.S. is celebrating the 135th anniversary of the signing of the U.S. Constitution, and Monument Chapter will be celebrating our 122nd year as a chapter this coming December. I want to thank you for your time. I appreciate that you did this.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is our public hearings section of the agenda. And as I said at the beginning of the meeting, the public hearings are an opportunity when the public can comment on the issue before us, and we will take the comments in the council chambers and then also online. But first, we're going to get a presentation on the item from Mr. Teague, and then we'll ask some questions from the council and get answers to those questions, and then we'll take public comment. So, thank you. Carrie Teague.
All right. Thank you, Acting Mayor Staunton, and members of the commission. This is a site that you're all familiar with, located on the west side of France, 727250 France Avenue. It's guided in our comprehensive plan for office residential use, which allows up to 75 units an acre. It's currently zoned planned unit development. Back in 2019, this is a look at the plan that was approved for the site but never built. There was to be about 300 units of housing, 10 townhomes on the west side, and 30,000 square feet of office or retail below. Project financially couldn't be built. There are a lot of issues with the site. It sits low. There's a lot of drainage problems. Basically, this entire area drains to the site, so their handling runoff. The site was very complicated in that there was underground parking that was very costly, and then handling all of that drainage underground as well kind of led to the project not being built. So here's a look at the site today, very different from that previous graphic. The building and parking ramp to the south is in a very poor state of repair. The good news is it's to be torn down starting next Monday. They're in for demolition permit, and work is supposed to start. So the proposal is a new development for these two sites. As you may recall, they did go through sketch plan. This is a look at the sketch plan that we considered. There was a grocer on the corner of 72nd and France, and then an office building to the south with surface parking located to the west. They've made a number of changes from that plan. They've eliminated that retail grocery store. They've enhanced that north-south connection through the site. They've enhanced the architecture, much more detail, and they've eliminated that right-in, right-out off of France in between the site, in the middle of the site. So this is to be a two-phase development. The first phase on the left side of the screen would be a five-story, about 125,000-square-foot office building with a 2,200-square-foot coffee shop on the main level. There would be underground parking. Note that they're suggesting a surface lot here on the north portion of the site. Based on our parking ordinance and the parking study that was done, they need those parking stalls, but they do have a user for the office building that what they'd like to do is just have this as proof of parking and just have entirely green space to the north. But it is there should they need the parking in that first phase. The second phase would be generally the same-size building, same square footage. It would be 150 units of housing with 10,000 square feet of retail or office on the main level. I'll just quickly move through some of the Phase 1 building renderings. The applicant will go through those in more detail. So this request requires a zoning ordinance amendment to revise that existing planned unit development district that was specific, that was the only project that could be built on the site under the current zoning, and then an overall development plan and a site plan review for Phase 1. This is a project where the city has complete discretion, being that it is a zoning ordinance amendment, basically a rezoning. So this is a look at the site plan. This is that right-in, right-out area that was previously proposed as a drive aisle. They've eliminated that, and it's now a pedestrian courtyard and plaza area. This kind of slopes downward as you move to the west. They've enhanced that north-south connection. This is the stormwater that I mentioned. It would be a surface infiltration basin, more like a rain garden. It wouldn't be wet all the time. Access to the underground parking would be off this north-south street, this location here, and future the same. This again shows that temporary parking, that if needed, they would construct for Phase 1, but the idea here is they would have that entirely green. So Phase 1, all of the landscaping, the courtyard, landscaping around France, the streets, that would all be installed. Basically, it would all be developed with the exception of the building for Phase 2. Would be a brick building, architectural, stone base, and again, the applicant will go through that in more detail. In regard to the setbacks, generally the same from the previously approved project. One item of note is the previous plan had a 20-foot setback off of Gallagher. The proposed plan is a little further back at 25 feet, so a little more room there. In terms of height, it is a six-story building, similar to the previous request, but it is taller, 84 feet tall. It still meets our height requirement for separation from an R1 district. Basically, the code reads that a building this size needs to be set back twice the height of the building. I have a graphic that shows that in a minute. And in terms of parking, they are short parked compared to code. We did have a parking study that was done, and for both Phase 1 and Phase 2, they would be providing enough parking to house the uses proposed, both in Phase 1 and Phase 2. Ed Terhart.
Is that the new code or the old code?
Well, this project came in before the new code was adopted, so it's far underneath the previous ordinance, but it's also short of the new code as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Ed Terhart is with us. He did that parking study. He also did the traffic study. He is online to answer any questions that you might have. So primary issue that was considered by staff and the planning commission are the proposed changes to that overall plan reasonable to justify a new PUD for the site. And both staff and the planning commission are recommending approval. The planning commission vote was 6 to 0. They did have one condition that I'll touch on at the end. Again, they're meeting the spirit of the Design Experience Guidelines by dividing the property up into smaller blocks, providing that pedestrian and vehicular connection north-south through the site and as well as east-west, the pedestrian. One thing I want to mention is the street typology on France isn't quite met. It suggests that at 60-foot tall, that it's step in, the building step in 10 feet. The applicant is agreeable to meet this typology as part of their final submittal. So doesn't meet it in the plans that are submitted, but they are willing to meet that. In terms of affordable housing, that previous project, 20% of the units were to be affordable within the project. So we're suggesting that when the housing develops in the future, that 10% of the housing be included in the project to meet our policy. They would also be seeking a LEED-certified building with that Phase 1. When Phase 2 was ready to develop, they would come back through this process again and get a site plan review and approval by planning commission and city council. We believe it meets a lot of the goals of the comprehensive plan, as I touched on, meets the PUD criteria. The provision of the public space, those pedestrian and vehicular connections north-south and east-west make up about 19% of the site. If you include the green space and sidewalks along 72nd and France and Gallagher, it would be almost 40% of the site, so a lot of public space with this project. Again, we believe the height is justified in that it meets that height separation. The building is 84 feet tall, and 168-foot setback is required to the nearest residential home, and the distance is about 250 feet to the adjacent, the closest R1 property. And again, a traffic study was done by StanTech. Ed Terhart is with us this evening to answer any questions, but the conclusion is that this proposal can be supported by the existing roadways, and no improvements would be needed. We received about 10 or 11 comments on Better Together. Generally, they were all favorable. Some had some concerns about traffic. Again, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval. The one condition that the planning commission recommended was that the pedestrian and bike be separated on that north-south connection, and the applicant has already accomplished that. And so this is what they're proposing. Recall, on the plans that were submitted, there was a median. They have narrowed the road, eliminated that median, and created a 10-foot shared pedestrian and bike path. Engineering has reviewed the plans, and it would meet their, the plans are satisfactory to engineering. Here is another rendering of what that might look like. One of the, so this isn't a large separation between the vehicles and the bike and pedestrian. The issue here is the underground parking comes right to this wall here. If we want to create more separation between the pedestrians, bicycles, and the cars, the building would have to be moved toward France, so within that 50-foot setback that they're meeting on that side. So if more green space is desirable by the council, they could slide the building a little bit closer to France. So it might be an item for discussion this evening. So with that, again, the recommendation is to close the public hearing at noon on September 26th and continue action to the October 6th city council meeting. With that, I can stand for questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Teague. Questions?
Is it possible, Mr. Mayor, is it possible to look at the footprint of what was previously approved? And this, can you do those two slides side by side just to see, because it seems like it's considerably less cover-up than what was there before?
I can look through my files and maybe come up with that?
All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Great. All right. So Mr. Carlson and Mr. Stafford and your team, come on up. Welcome back.
Thank you, Director Teague. Did a very good job of going through that and answered a lot of my bullet points from the get-go, so I appreciate that. Council members, good evening. I'm Drew Stafford with Orion Investments at 6550 York, and we're obviously extremely happy to be here to share with you the latest update of this project. If any of you have been to the site recently, you can see the equipment and the machinery that's there. And as Director Teague noted, that we're on schedule for the 26th for 7250 ramp to begin demolition, followed by the building at 7250, and then followed by 7800. The reason because of that sequencing is because of the amount of environmental remediation that's taken place there with lead paint and asbestos. But we are on track right now. Like I said, it's extremely good news that these are coming down, not only for the community but everybody involved in the project. So that being said, before I hand over to Nate Anger from our talented architectural team at ESG, I might be at fault for repeating some of the same points that Director Teague had mentioned, but I would like to give you guys just a general overview and update of the project and kind of speak on the, I guess, the important principles, the core principles, I guess we refer to with this project from the beginning. First and foremost, we felt as a team it was extremely important to reach out to the neighborhood and the surrounding communities early on, which we did so before submitting at sketch plan, presenting, as you saw, on the previous plan, a grocer and a medical office building. The reaction from the neighborhood and the surrounding committee was overwhelmingly positive. And through sketch plan into July, we also had another meeting as well with the community, the South Cornelia Neighborhood Association as well, and over Zoom, took questions, presented our latest plan as well, which you are seeing. And once again, the reaction there was positive as well, and it continues to the present day based off the feedback we've got from the Better Together Edina website. So like I said, creating that neighborhood engagement early on and then that alignment was very important to us as a team. Second, we wanted to make sure that we were able to essentially capture the spirit of the previously approved project. They had emphasized that north-south connector, the pedestrian connectivity, green space, the activation, the stormwater solution, that was all a priority for that previous project. And we feel with this latest plan that we have, we've captured that and then some, not only with, like I said, the north-south connection there, as well as the stormwater solution that we feel we've come up with as a team that almost integrates into that current landscape that's there and emphasizes it. And as Director Teague had noticed as well, there was a small change- And as Director Teague had noticed as well, there was a small change that we've made based off our feedback from planning commission that we feel is, you know, it enhances that north-south connector by separating the bike and pedestrian path from the car traffic, which my partner Ted Carlson and Nate Enger will be able to go into a little bit more specifics and detail on that. Lastly, the sustainability portion of this project, these buildings have been, they're blighted buildings, they've been there for many years. And as a resident for the past 10 years now, I understand the importance of moving this project forward and the potential there, and seeing these buildings finally come down and the progress and the process that's being played through here, it's extremely important to me as a resident of Edina, I understand the importance of it. So, that being said, once again, Director Teague had mentioned that we are on track right now for a LEED-certified building. And not only that, but following the April 1st sustainability guidelines that were introduced through the city, let alone essentially this overall project, following the Design Experience Guidelines and doing our best to accommodate those. So, we also, at the end of this project presentation, we have a video that really helps emphasize the project's scope and kind of gives you a better feel of the general visuals and the potential that this project can bring to the community. And we're very proud to present to you tonight. So, that being said, thank you, and hand the mic over to Nate Enger.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Welcome, Mr. Enger.
Good evening. Acting Mayor Staunton, council members, thank you. A good evening again. I am Nate Enger, as Drew alluded to. I'm an architect with ESG Architecture and Design. I have the pleasure of working with both Ted and Drew and my partner here, Joanna Griffith, who is also an architect with ESG. And certainly, if I get into any trouble, she will jump up here, I'm sure. So, it will be my pleasure to walk you through kind of the updates. I know last time we were here was during Sketch Plan, and quite a bit has changed. My goal here is to kind of go into the specific changes and answer any questions you might have in that regard, as well as maybe speaking to some of the specific changes that came out of the planning commission meeting last week. So I'm going to go through some of these slides rather quickly to not waste everybody's time, but this is the schedule that we've kind of been on. This shows you where we've been and where we're going. One thing we didn't touch on here is that we're moving rather quickly to start this project. So we're looking at a March-April construction start. So, not only will we be seeing the buildings come down rather quickly, we'll actually see activity on the site rather quickly as well if this is approved. As you, I'm sure, are familiar, this site sits at kind of a confluence of a lot of different types of uses. We border a residential area and then are kind of at a gateway to a lot of commercial retail spaces. And as such, we believe this is an ideal opportunity for a mixed-use site. As Director Teague had mentioned, and as I'm sure you're aware, we have transitioned the site to be both office and residential. And so we believe this brings the truest mixed-use environment that we can provide, given the site's size. You're familiar with the project site, I'm sure. We've talked about this quite a bit, and also some excellent winter photography. And Mr. Stafford did, I think, a great job of highlighting the project objectives. A couple things that I might add on to that. First and foremost is the parking. Obviously, we do need parking to support the uses. However, we've achieved 94% of the parking being below grade, which is a pretty staggering figure, considering the amount of parking we need to meet. We are hovering right around 3 per 1,000 on the office square footage, which is kind of market for something like this, and the vast majority of that is underground. So, we're very proud of that. Additionally, the stormwater retention pond that we'll talk about, I'm sure, a little bit more here, is not only taking storm event for our site, but the neighboring residential sites as well. And the mitigation of this feature will benefit not just our site, but those sites as well. We anticipate 500-plus jobs being created just in the office alone, as well as the 150 dwelling units that could be created to the north. So here is an overview of where we're at today. The biggest departure here, obviously, is the removal of the grocery store on the north and the conversion of that to a residential project. We are still looking at an office building here. Previously, we were looking at medical office. This is now pure office. What that means in technical terms is that we have a lower demand for car parking at grade and ambulance traffic and things like that. So, from a neighborhood perspective, it reduces the concern about sound and things of that sort. In terms of all other uses, it's basically the same function from the exterior. So the architecture has remained fairly similar with that change. You can see here, this plan is still indicating the north-south connector that we had previously. And we'll go into detail on what was changed based on the planning commission feedback, but we do have a very strong connection north-south, as is recommended by the Design Experience Guidelines, as well as a very strong east-west pedestrian connection. Now, previously in Sketch Plan, when we last looked at this, we still had a right-in, right-out there. We believe that it creates a better pedestrian environment by creating green space here and accessibility. It will also be leveraged by our building through the use of amenities on the first floor as active use. So, we imagine there will be some sort of kitchenette, some sort of activity there that can open onto the outdoors and really populate this space. So it doesn't just look like a formal park, but it's actually being used and should encourage further users of the site to engage and utilize that as well. You can also see the infiltration basin here. We can talk more in detail about what that's doing, but it's rather large. And your question, Councilmember Jackson, earlier was appropriate. If you just visualize here that, the size of that retention pond, that was all populated previously by townhomes. So that chunk alone is no longer being hard-surfaced. So that kind of gives you a sense of the magnitude of change that we're making here. So this plan shows kind of the bettered north-south connection. And we do have a rendering of that that we can look at, because this is a great technical document, but it doesn't really tell you how it's going to feel. The intent of this, and I believe the intent of the planning commission, was really to create a stronger pedestrian connection north-south through the site. Previously, we had a two-way drive here with a median and a shared bike lane within that. And I believe it was the planning commission's feeling, and ours as well, that that was creating kind of a unsafe condition or a condition that created further complexity with different modes of transport. So what we've done here is we've reduced the median, or eliminated it in fact, and we have a 24-foot wide roadway. So that's still two-way, allows traffic straight through the site and to access our parking access doorways, excuse me. Then we have a curb and green space, and then we have a 10-foot shared bike and pedestrian path, which is more than generous. I believe the minimum is eight feet, so we're beyond where that is. And as Director Teague had mentioned, I think it is, would be appropriate if we wanted to have the discussion if more were desirable. It would not be onerous for us to even shift the building further into that setback if that was something the council were interested in discussing, to replace with more usable green space in this area. So perhaps food for thought later. I'll go over these very briefly. Director Teague already did a fantastic job here, but this image shows what our preferred condition is for Phase 1. We would prefer to leave this as green space, leveraging proof-of-parking if necessary. As Director Teague mentioned, we do have an anchor tenant set up, and we believe, based on that tenancy, that we do not need that surface parking to support that tenancy. So, based on what we know now, we don't believe we need the surface parking. However, we don't know what the leasing scenario will be. We still have two additional floors, based on parking demands that any of those tenants might have. We did want to make sure that we communicated that we could potentially need that as a transition space until the full site is built out, at which point there is a second ramp in that position that the building would be under that would also support office parking. And here's just an image of, if that condition arose where we needed temporary parking, that's how that would appear. And that is walkable and accessible to the office building. And then this is Phase 2. This would be a multifamily or hospitality building here. Obviously, we haven't designed anything yet because we don't quite know what the use is, but we imagine that it would kind of carry the same architecture over, albeit with a different typology. We feel it's very important to hold kind of the street fringe along France and create a more accessible facade for the residents on the west side. This is just a quick snapshot of some of the sustainability objectives that Drew had kind of alluded to. The biggest one really is the brownfield redevelopment here, just because these buildings are in such bad condition. But we also see opportunity for the green spaces to provide, to reduce heating island effect. Certainly, that will help, and that would be a betterment beyond what the previous proposal was, as well as the native habitat that the retainage pond will supply when not in a wet condition. Some quick shadow studies. Really, the takeaway here is that, as mentioned previously by Director Teague, that 250 feet is actually doing some real work for us in terms of shadowing the neighbors. We don't come anywhere close to kind of infringing on any of those properties with a shadow line, so that's a pretty positive case. Here are kind of the different modal access points for the site. The primary access points now will be on 72nd and Gallagher. Gallagher is the only signed intersection on this site. 72nd has a northbound left turn and a southbound right turn. So we believe kind of the main access will be along Gallagher, because again, it is signed. But the removal of the right-in, right-out should also reduce the concern that some of the neighbors had about cut-through traffic, because this will primarily be used for cars who are using it as a parking access drive as opposed to kind of circumvent France. And then we have the bike path and pedestrian paths here. So, this is a revised diagram based on the outcomes of the planning commission meeting. Previously, we had most of that accessible route running in front of the building, and while that path still does exist, we have an additional, more direct path that runs and shares the north-south drive between 72nd and Gallagher. It's worth noting, and I believe we have this slide in a moment, that the alignment of this is ideal for the north and south sites that are planned at some phase when they redevelop to have a further Wu-Nurf typology, which is kind of requested in those DEGs. So the location of this would align very well with those and continue any pedestrian and bike infrastructure. This slide just shows accessible routes, and it's maybe worth noting that the pitch on the street is relatively steep, but because it is a street, would not necessarily be required to be accessible. However, pedestrians can still utilize that. We do have defined pedestrian accessible access through the site, which means it has a less steep grade, so that people can move through that in a more safe fashion. I think I will move through this. This just shows the typologies, and Director Teague did a great job of demonstrating that we mean the intent of those, in addition to some of the modifications we'd make along France as a result of that street room typology. And here's that slide I was talking about. So you can see, as sites to the north and south become further redeveloped, the DEGs are calling for this to be a Wu-Nurf, for a walkable connection. This site would be kind of the leader in that and set the standard for how these particular sites connect through. I'm just going to go through these quickly. We can go back if you have questions, how we're meaning the nine things to remember. But we've spent some time really articulating in this document how each of these principles is met by the development, as well as the typologies and public realm experience. You can read that tonight if you're really needing to get to bed. So, a little bit about architecture and building form. At the time when we reviewed this in Sketch Plan, we obviously had not developed the architecture. The architecture that we have developed now at this point is really more of a classical architecture that we feel is compatible with where Edina is at and where it will be going. So it adheres to a base, middle, and top typology, however done in a more modern expression. We are taking to heart the requirements for natural materials at the base, and we are also addressing the 20-foot clear height requirement and the 70% glazing on the first level. So what you can see in this image and further images is a stone material at the base, and then we're using a mixture of brick and glass in the body of the building. And the top has a very strong capping element that we'll get to here in a moment. This just shows the room typologies and how we're addressing those. Documents, some feedback. I want to get into the particular images here. And we can certainly go back. We have a lot of exhibits here to address as questions arise. Maybe I'll just address this one very quickly before we get into the renderings. I'd mentioned earlier that this drainage area does, in fact, recover water from the neighboring areas. This document shows exactly which areas are being served by this pond. So you can see it's well outside our development. So the remediation and the enlargement of this area will benefit the surrounding area. Okay, so a couple images. This one is on the west side of the building. This would be facing the residential area. And maybe of most important note here, this is identifying the newly revised north-south connector as requested by the planning commission last Tuesday, Wednesday. So, a little less than a week ago, the feedback was really to create the separation. So what we've done, as I expressed, is we've kind of collapsed the median, put these two things together with a buffer in between. So you can see, we have a vehicular drive here, and the intent would be to provide a more suitable walking surface or something that would slow down traffic. So we're utilizing a lot of different architectural and civil mechanisms, including a tabled intersection when we get to the bottom of this, to really slow down traffic and give visual cues that you are near pedestrians here. We don't want or anticipate this to be an area where cars are going through at 30 miles an hour. It's really meant to be a traffic calming element. Along the side here, you can see the shared pedestrian and bike area. Moving up to the building, you'll see that there's a differentiation in the two facades, the primary facades, that is, the one facing the residential area as well as the one facing France. So along the residential area, we're doing more glazing. And particularly, we're doing that because we feel like glazing is a softer transition to the neighbors and presents a more friendly facade there, as opposed to a strong brick facade that would feel monolithic. And you can see the strong base element, as well as the strong cap element, which should give it a very unique and classic look. Here's another top-down view of that north-south connection here. We can certainly go back to talk specifics. And then here's the France elevation. And what I want to point out here is that on this side, we're articulating this more as a solid. So more brick on this side, a little bit less glass, and that's twofold. That's to give it a more stately appearance along France and be a little bit more congruent with the existing architecture along the side of France. But also because this is an office building and because France is such a high-volume roadway, the solid material actually gives us some acoustic buffer too from all the roadway noise that's developed. A full glass building can be challenged to mitigate that noise. So it really is doing some work for us architecturally here. You can see we have a balcony overlooking France, as well as you may have picked up, there was one facing the residence on the west side. This image also gives a nice view of the east-west pedestrian palmonade that we're calling Danila, and the kind of variety of different landscape features, as well as pedestrian amenity that would occur there. Only thing missing out of this image, of course, is what I discussed earlier, perhaps an opening in this building to allow for building activation at this corner to really engage with this plaza and make it more active. Just a couple other quick elevations. This is the view from Gallagher, and so you can kind of see the transition from solid to glass here. You can see the active room typology occurring here. We're stepping back from the neighborhood. But just a very stately architecture that we believe captures what we think could be a future, an architecture for this part of Edina. And then just an elevation straight on, and you can kind of see both the punch windows and the large amount of glass that we're using to achieve that 70% of glazing at that first floor. floor. Couple other quick images here that we'd be happy to come back and discuss. And with that, I think maybe we'd have a video that we'd like to show really briefly that might capture a little bit more of this. I feel like we've done this before, Carrie. Thank you. And with that, I think Ted and I can be available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Anger. Any questions for Mr. Anger or Mr. Stafford? Member Anderson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple questions very quickly. The 721 meeting, I wasn't quite certain, was the 721 meeting with the neighborhood? Did that include the new plans?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. That's, and that was, that was well received, if I understand your, yeah, good.
Very much so, yes.
Okay. The traffic study is a little incomplete on, I just like to rule out the possibility of drive-through traffic through the neighborhood. How do you, what would you say about that?
Specifically about cut-through traffic?
Yeah.
I'm, we have the traffic engineer on the phone.
Yes.
Who could, who could maybe respond to that.
Yeah, it wasn't clear from the studies, but if there's any projections on that, that'd be useful.
Jennifer, is the traffic consultant with us?
Yes.
Yep, I'm here. Can you see me?
Yeah. I'll just get in there. Probably you just see.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi. Welcome from the bottom of the soup can.
Did we lose him?
Yep, I'm here.
I can see him.
Oh, okay.
So I believe the question was a little bit more specificity on cut-through traffic through the neighborhood specifically as it relates to the traffic study.
Sure. The roadway connection that's being designed or being proposed is designed for low-speed traffic. It can be designed to accommodate the traffic to and from the site. As far as cut-through traffic, there may be some that would occur, but I do not anticipate there being a large amount that would happen at this site just because of the location of the site and the access that we already have to France at both 72nd and Gallagher.
Not sure if I got much of that.
Yeah, hang on, Mr. Tur. We're getting a little audio trouble here.
It's us, not you, Ed. But I believe what he said is that, based on the location, he doesn't anticipate a lot of this, and also because of the design of the roadway to support low-speed traffic, that would also deter individuals from using this as an efficient way to cut through. Is that, does that summarize it, Ed?
Yeah, I think that does. That is a good summary.
Okay. That's very useful. Thank you. There were a couple of items in the AFO report. One of them related to district parking as a question mark. Any response for that, or? There's a fair amount of surface parking there.
With regard to the AFO report and surface parking?
Yeah, he was, well, the reference there, I think, was to district parking, and I'm trying to correlate that with the amount of surface parking that you have. Is there a possibility of any potential use for district parking on that?
You know, I think that remains to be seen if and what happens on Phase 1 to the north. I think what we've tried to do is build a project that has the parking needed today with potential deflection in the future. As we talk about parking, you know, no one likes to build parking. It's a drag and a pro forma, and we're trying to build for the future. And so one of the other things we've talked about as a development team is if and when there is a more of a parking requirement. We've got great adjacencies to surface parking, and at that point, it becomes, become upon us as a developer to try to secure more surface parking and/or we can use some of the other district parking options in the area.
Okay, thank you. There was a, Director Teague mentioned the possibility of, there was, there was a height conversation, and we've got a 60-foot limit there. We're going to 84 and the step back. I didn't quite catch all of that when you, when you discussed that.
Yeah, it's the France Avenue elevation.
Yes.
So the side that faces France. On one of those graphics, you could see the, the building is proposed to just go straight up.
Yes.
They've agreed as a, and it's one of the conditions of approval, is that it does step in 10 feet at that 60-foot mark.
Okay, oh, good. That, thank you.
Yep.
I guess last thing is, I guess this means no Kowalskis.
No Kowalskis at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So I've got a couple of questions. One is, I believe, and this might be for you, Mr. Teague, the requirement for the setback on France uniformly is 50 feet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So with that, I would not suggest moving the building. I think we need to stay at that 50 feet. But for the safety of the walking and biking path, you know, consider putting some bollards in there or something. I'm thinking of what the plantings are like on the very narrow boulevard on 56th Street or 58th Street right now. There are some daylilies. It's really hard to grow something in a little narrow strip like that. So maybe for the safety purpose, putting something permanent so those cars don't cross over, I would really appreciate that. The other thing is, on the shadow study, looking at when the Phase 2 comes into play, will there be enough sunlight for those trees to grow between the two buildings? And you guys know that better than I would know.
Yes, good evening. We're working with Confluence, who I think also does a lot of work on behalf of the city of Adina. And so it's our expectation that when we hire the expert, that we'll have great plantings to not only provide a good buffer along the bike and pedestrian path, but also between the buildings.
Okay, terrific. I'm just, yeah, concerned that those two buildings, and we don't want to, you know, plant trees that are going to die then. And one of the things that the AFO report did reference was the Danila Street, which is the plaza. It looks like the, based on the different moving elevations of the various parcels, it just doesn't make sense to put a street through there. And I assume it's the elevation that made the setup more of a plaza rather than a street. Is that correct?
Yes, and before I forget, I'd like to give a shout out to my daughter Dani and my son Cody who are watching. I forgot to do that earlier, earlier. So Danila Plaza, as it's now named, is named after my daughter Dani and Drew's daughter Mila. So a little bit of levity in tonight's meeting. But Danila Plaza, yes, is designed to provide an ADA access through the site and then a connector to France. And we just, as we reviewed our sketch plans with alignment with the DEGs, and I think all the goals and objectives, makes much more sense to make it a more communal place, a plaza, gathering, and ultimately connecting what should be a mixed-use project on the north and the south.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Just a couple of questions, just in terms of the, the west side of the structure and the parking. Have you given any thought to particularly on the south side building? What possibilities that opens for the, you're creating kind of this street and bike path. How would the other side of the street develop if, and how, how is your design thinking about how the other side of the street would develop?
I don't know how to control anymore here.
Yeah, we have one now, and you don't. Oh, and there now, you have one? Do you have it now?
Ah ha.
Okay.
Yes. Great, great question. I think maybe what we'll do here is we'll find an appropriate slide. Maybe, maybe this guy helps us kind of have that conversation. So if, if I understand, Acting Mayor Staunton, what you're specific, speaking to specifically is what we're showing is a wall right now on the far west side?
Right. So, so when you go further north, you'll get the pond. But I'm talking about the part of the property that isn't adjacent to the pond, and there's currently multifamily housing to the west, but there's a parking lot, and that could certainly redevelop in the future to be, and I'm wondering how this invites them to face that.
Great question. Thank you. As we represented to the planning commission last week, is we do not ever like to make overtures about property that we do not own. And we, you know, so with, to that extent, the Cedars is a great project in our city. And Mark Peterson owns the Cedars, has been very engaged. Drew and I met him on-site, multiple conversations. I don't want to pretend that at any point in the future, Mark Peterson would be agreeable to doing anything. So let me set that expectation.
And I get that that's not, I mean, that's kind of our job, not yours, is to think that.
Yeah.
But I want to see how you're setting the table to invite him to do something.
Yes, thank you. So to that extent, the north-south connector is aligned with property lines to the north beyond Sunrise and to the south with part of the Cedars and the office condo building, and then further south. So the way we've designed the road really bisects the property lines where that is the grid divider, so to speak. So in the future, five or 50 years, who knows, we think there's a great opportunity to further extend a greater pedestrian experience to the west of our south site.
But if there was a development on that side that's going to face your development, what are they going to see and how? Because it looks like they're going to see your parking, your surface parking that's in front of the building.
Quite possibly, but, you know, I think they're faced with the same topography challenges that we have at this point. So, you know, I think to the extent that we've laid it out to minimize as much soil movement as we can and use the topography to our advantage, I think they're in, if not same, probably similar situation.
And then is that, is that wall just a holding place, or is it a retaining wall, or are you just kind of putting that there as a placeholder?
Yeah, currently, because we don't, we don't know what would happen there. It's just kind of a holding pattern. But what would likely have to happen on our site is a retaining wall because we are cutting down, and there's a significant grade there. I guess in addition to that, one of the things we think is a benefit is that by moving all this parking to the inside, potentially presents an opportunity for this development to do the same and create outward-facing buildings with walkable streets that don't have surface parking. So if we can create developments like the DEGs envisioned, where there's a Wu-Nerf moving all the way through, we can put all the building faces, the out-facing pedestrian sides on the outside, and put all the parking and traffic on the inside.
So you would be anticipating they would mirror what you've done on the other side and then face the other direction?
And I believe that's what's being contemplated in the DEGs as well with the inclusion of that north-south connector, is that you would be moving that stuff in so that you would have all the pedestrian activity happening on the outside.
All right, thank you. Sid, prompt any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So this is a public hearing, and this is the time where we'll invite members in the, in the chambers to comment on this project. You'll have three minutes, and help yourself to one of the side podiums, and you'll get a green light while you're talking. It'll turn yellow when it's time to start thinking about wrapping up, and then hit the red light if you could wrap up. That would be great. And if you can start your comments by introducing yourself and giving us your address. So anybody that wants to comment on this project? Not everybody wants. All right. Anybody online?
I don't have anyone online at this point. There is a slight delay with the broadcast, though, so I would recommend we wait a minute before moving on. My clock shows that it's 8:05, so I will come back to you at 8:06 or when I have a caller, whichever is first.
And in the meantime, if you do want to call in, you can dial 1-888-504-7949. Use conference ID 976976 and press star 1 in order to be taken out of the queue.
It's now been over a minute, and we still don't have a caller, so I think it's safe for you to move forward with the agenda.
All right, thank you. All right. Is there a motion to continue this matter? Let's see, to close the public hearing at noon on September 26th and continue the action to the October 6th City Council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing now, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same thing. All right, thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate the presentation. All right, next up is the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. The first item is to receive the advisory communication from the Heritage Preservation Commission. We have Emily Bodicker, the Assistant City Planner, and Annie Schilling, the Chair of our Historic, our Heritage Preservation Commission. Nice to see you again, both. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, thank you, members of the City Council. Tonight, the City Council has asked to receive advisory communication from the Heritage Preservation Commission. As you know, the Heritage Preservation Commission met with City Council on June 21st at their annual joint work session. At that meeting, the HPC identified a number of concerns that they wanted council and city staff to address. After the work session, city staff worked with the Heritage Preservation Commission to create a subcommittee of commissioners to outline their recommendations and to communicate those recommendations to City Council through the advisory communication, which is why we're here tonight. The subcommittee of the Heritage Preservation consists of Chair Schilling, Vice Chair Nemo, and Commissioner Longquist. And that group created the advisory communication that summarizes the situation and the background based from the Heritage Preservation perspective, and then outlined their goals and their recommendations for staff moving forward. So tonight, there is no specific action requested other than receiving the advisory communication. The staff report that was included in the packet tonight includes staff comments and recommendations based on those recommendations made from the Heritage Preservation Commission. And then moving forward, staff plans to work with the Heritage Preservation Commission on those recommendations to clarify the COA process and the process requirements. So like I said, staff is currently working on draft changes to the zoning code and is drafting a potential escrow fee policy for landmark properties. Staff's goal is to have those items in front of the HPC for review and comment, and then to Planning Commission and ultimately City Council for approval in 2022 and for implementation in early 2023. And you'll likely hear from the Heritage Preservation Commission with their work plan in '23 on some additional items. So with that, I'm here, joined by Commissioner Schilling tonight, and we can answer any questions that you might have, or if, Annie, if you have anything addition?
I do just have a couple of comments. Thank you, council members, for allowing me to be here and your consideration of acceptance of this advisory communication. I just want to say a couple of things. This advisory communication we are asking you to accept tonight is in no way the Heritage Preservation Commission saying that this system is broken. It's not. The plan of treatment that we use as our guiding document was revised in 2008, adopted by City Council, and it has worked in large part. Since 2008, there has been one teardown, and eight homes have, have lost their heritage designation. The work of the Heritage Preservation Commission in the recent past have, our work has brought forward some new issues. What happens when a project does not follow the plan? What happens when a What happens when historic resource is left to the elements or a site is left covered in weeds? The answers to these questions fall outside of the Heritage Preservation Commission's jurisdiction. However, if these issues are not addressed, the Heritage Preservation Commission cannot uphold the city's stated preservation goals. The communication we are presenting tonight is a result of the Heritage Preservation Commission and the city staff coming together, working together. It is an exploration of solutions in order for staff and the Heritage Preservation Commission to enforce Edina's preservation goals consistently. Our goal is simply to do this important preservation work consistently and fairly. And with that, I am open to any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bodicker and Chair Schilling. Any questions? Commissioner Jerry, member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So first of all, I just want to get these numbers straight. Eight have lost their historic designation. Of how many homes?
There are 555 homes within the district.
So that's very impressive. It really is working. And that's my takeaway. That your takeaway as well?
It is. If I might be so bold, of course, every heritage resource is important. We certainly want, wouldn't want to put a value on and give, give preferential treatment to one versus another. Any loss is significant, but yes, I agree with you that the process is working, large in part.
Thank you. And I just want to comment that I know you guys have worked so hard on this, and this is very complicated and it's very subtle in a lot of ways. This communication is extremely well-written. And it takes this sort of fuzzy things and breaks it down into a very understandable and actionable items, and I really commend that. The timeline, I believe you said, Ms. Bodicker, was we would see something in 2023 as, as changes that we would approve? Is that sort of, can you tell me sort of when in 2023?
Well, staff's goal is to have any potential code changes to, in front of the Heritage Preservation Commission for review and comment, and then ultimately through the planning commission and city council in 2022. And then we could start implementing some of those changes in '23. We're hoping that that works out.
Okay. Well, that's ambitious, but I strongly encourage that because I think this is something that's been really causing a lot of stomach aches, and we'd love to see that happen. So thank you very much, both of you, for your hard work.
Thank you.
All right. I want to say thank you to Ms. Schilling and to the commissioners on our behalf or on my behalf for your good work. I know you and I were up in Duluth for the Preserve Minnesota Conference last week, and, and it was a terrific opportunity to see the great work that's going on all over the state to preserve heritage resources. And I think, I think one of the takeaways here is that the commitment of the Heritage Preservation Commission to preserving these resources is really terrific. And, and I think somebody watching should not be confused about our mutual commitment to this goal. It's just that we're trying to figure out the details and how it works best going forward. So thank you for your commitment. And Emily, thank you for your continued work on behalf of the commission to protect these resources. And I understand there's no action that you're looking for us to take tonight. I appreciate the efforts that you've made, and we look forward to hearing your recommendations as we go forward.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for the acknowledgements as well.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? All right. Thank you. All right. Next up is approving a right-of-way easement vacation at 5304 Whiting Avenue. Mr. Milner has this matter, I believe.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Stotan and members of the council. We received no comments since we held the public hearing last council meeting and then on Better Together Edina, we'd recommend approval of resolution 2022-79.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion adopting resolution 20-22-79 approving right-of-way easement vacation at 5304 Whiting Avenue.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. All right. The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Milner, for that efficient report. Next up is ordinance 2022-12 establishing municipal licensing and regulatory system for THC-infused edibles and drinks. Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of council. We had a previous reading of this ordinance where council gave staff additional direction, particularly on what you thought would be a better penalty section. So we have incorporated your proposal under the penalty section, that 12-558. And really, this is, is ready to go. It's what you've asked for, and here we are tonight.
All right. Any questions?
Happy to answer any questions.
Member Anderson.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Last question I had, it just occurred to me actually on the way over here this afternoon, there is, there's no circumstance, is there, that you can imagine that we would be, say, at the municipal liquor stores, that we would be involved in any, in any sales of THC products?
That is not currently allowed under Minnesota law, under state law.
Thank you very much.
Member Jackson. All right. So, and I have no further questions. So I'd entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2022-12 establishing a municipal licensing and regulatory system for THC-infused edibles and drinks and grant second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. All right. The motion passes. And when will that become effective?
Tonight?
Is that immediate? I can't remember.
Acting Mayor technically upon publication, but effective tonight, and then.
So then there'll be a licensing effort, so people who are interested will have to apply for licenses.
Correct.
All right. Terrific. Thank you. All right. Next up is resolution 2022-84 adopting a proposed budget and establishing a proposed tax levy payable in 2023. This is really the preliminary approval. And Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of council. Tonight, we are asking the city council to approve the proposed property tax levy for 2023. What you're asking, what we're asking for tonight is to approve the maximum proposed tax levy for 2023. When we make this action at the city council level at this time of year, we generally propose a property tax levy that is kind of usually to the highest, higher end of your tolerance level, because it can always be brought down at the final action in December. However, it can't be increased after tonight, and so that's, that's generally how we do this. So let's, let's take a look at this presentation. Tonight, we really wanted to start off with just some grounding slides to talk about how we do our budget process here. I do want to introduce to the people at home, Alicia McAndrews, our finance director, is running the PowerPoint tonight, and will be available to answer questions too.
Welcome, Ms. McAndrews.
So we start our budget process really firmly grounded in a vision statement, vision Edina, and comprehensive plan, documents that are approved and reviewed and approved by, by the city council. You help us also put together the capital improvement plan and our budget work plan. Again, documents that are very important from a policy standpoint, even though they are really more full of numbers. We have a biennial budget process in, in Edina. That means that in 2020, in even numbered years, 2020 was one of those, we spend most of our time and effort forming our capital improvement spending, our capital improvement planning efforts. That's what we do in even years, and that capital improvement planning horizon is 2023 to 2028. We still, however, have to pay attention to our operating budgets for the upcoming year. So in 2023, we will adopt, or we will go through the process and eventually adopt a budget for 2024 and 2025. The budget that we are working under right now in 2022 was initially adopted by the council in December of 2021. So it's been, it's been a little while since that happened. And normally, in the second year, we don't really propose much in, in the way of change to you. So what we're going to propose to you here in a few more slides is something different than that. And we've got some, we, what we feel are good reasons for that, and we want to talk about that, too. So getting back to some of the underlying policy that, that supports our budget, we use this budget pillar structure to, to take a look at everything that we do in terms of, of city services and structures. Strong foundation, livable city, better together, and reliable service. When you look at all of our programming and services, we shape our, our efforts in these budget pillars. And the budget pillars also drive our budget values and our budget strategies. You know, I think our, our budget really is, is the aggregation of a lot of policy and a lot of beliefs and values. Really, it's your chief value statement as a, as an elected official. Our budget values come from the council, and, and we've had a lot of discussion on these over the years. Stewardship, equity, health, and sustainability are key values about how we, what approach we take towards putting our budgets together. This is what our 2022 budget, consolidated budget looks like. In this year, we will spend, we have budgeted to spend about $140 million in a lot of different areas, a wide variety of, of services and, and facilities in the city. $80 million of that, so more than half are what we call governmental funds. And under the governmental funds, $52 million of that is our general fund. And that is really where the chief, the chief source of dollars is, is our property tax levy, and that really connects us to what we're doing tonight. This is the, this is the approved tax levy that you approved as council members back in December of 2021. And remember, our planning horizon in 2021 was 2022 and 2023. So this is what we approved in December of '21, '22 and '23. And '22 is, is the year we're in now, of course, and this is what we are doing. 2023 is the year, this is what you had given tentative approval to back in December of 2021, and this is, this is the version of that that we're going to ask you to approve a modification to here shortly. So what are the changes that we've observed or had to deal with since December of 2021? One of them has been increases in, in competition and wages, labor shortage. A lot of different organizations and sectors of the economy are experiencing this same sort of wage growth and labor shortfalls. We want to be, we need, we have got a number of positions that we need to make sure we can attract new employees to. And to do that, we've got to, we've got to pay a market rate. We also have a few contracts, labor contracts that have been settled, and they've been settled at rates that were a little bit larger than what we had proposed for 2023. So we want to make sure we can cover that as well. The other major thing that happened to us during this time period is we saw major growth in our property values in, in Edina as well. 12.4%, and you'll see what that looks like on a gross basis across the estimated market value of the city and individual, our median single-family home increased by 15% in terms of its market value. This is the estimated market value of the city. This is measured in billions of dollars. So if you take a look at 2011, our city's estimated market value, so the market value of all of the market properties in the community, $9.4 billion. That has grown, it took a dip for a couple of years in 2012 and 2013, but it has grown steadily to $15.5 billion in 2022. So this, this particular budget is, is a good comparison to try to show you what we are proposing in terms of a change tonight. We have the budget for 2021 on the far left side. That's the approved budget from last year. The approved budgets for 2022 and 2023 are shown on this page, and what we're looking at for preliminary budget, what's called preliminary, budget 2023, and then two other numbers that are shown in green here. These are the areas that we are asking for, or drawing your attention to, that we'd like to change. And we'd like to show a little bit more detail on what they are. One is in our general operating levy, and the other is a special park improvement levy for capital spending, and we'll talk about that in a second. So one of the interesting things that happens occasionally for cities is that we are able to increase our spending and at the same time, property taxpayers are able to experience a decrease in their property taxes. And it doesn't, it doesn't sound like that can be possible, but we do see that in certain circumstances, and we are going to see that in 2023. So 2021, our median single-family home was, was valued at $571,800. It paid about $142 a month in property taxes. In 2022, that, that market value had increased to $659,900, and it's an increase of 12.4%. What we are proposing in the upcoming year is an increase of 9.89% in our property tax levy, and it would have the impact on the 2023 market valued, a single-family, median single-family home of providing a 3.15% decrease in their city property taxes, a $64 decrease per year over the previous year. Most of that, most of that additional dollars we, we are asking for is going to be dedicated toward employee compensation, market adjustment, workers' compensation increases, and other inflationary increases. I think it's important to remember that when staff and council were putting together the budget for 2023 back in, just back in 2021, we were thinking of the future in terms of, of the present, right? We were projecting two and sometimes 3% increase in, in inflation, and what we got was, was, was three times that, almost four times that in terms of actual performance of inflation. That, that inflation impacts our budget in a lot of different ways, but the biggest way on our most important expense that we have is, is employee compensation. So that's part of what is driving this. The additional $1 million of special park improvement revenue, this comes from our ability to make this change this year because of this unique experience that we're having with our, our property tax levy. When we had a discussion with the council in work session a few weeks ago, I laid out to you a, a capital improvement plan that was, that had prioritized some parks and park improvements in a way that we probably weren't going to do them because we, we didn't have enough money in our levy to do them. You asked us to go back and see if we could remedy that. Is there a way that we could levy for additional park improvement dollars? And we found a way to do that, and so that's what that money is. This is a new chart. I need to give credit to Assistant Manager Schaefer for putting this together because I, but I think it's a, a great summary of, of the impact of our budget. And this is, in, in Edina, city councils over the years have looked at this particular metric as being kind of a key decision-making metric. What we are showing here is just the median, Edina median single-family value of a home from '21 to '22 and from the estimated market value of the community. But most importantly, this is the market value of, of the tax impact of what we're showing for the median single-family home in '22 versus the median single-family home in '23. And we, again, this is the depiction of, of what their property tax burden is going to be from, from city government. They also have property tax burdens that are imposed by counties, by watershed districts, and by school districts. But in our scenario, we're showing a decrease in, in property tax impact on the median single-family home. And that's extraordinary, actually, in this, in this example. This is the general property tax distribution of, for taxpayers in Edina, and this has been pretty stable over the years with the city at 20 and Hennepin County at 30 and the school district at 40, and the remaining piece of it generally somewhere in 10% or less by other smaller taxing districts like watershed districts and mosquito control districts and the metropolitan council and other districts like that. We have shown city councils over the years what happens to the median single-family home. That's been a, a key metric for us. home. That's been a, a key metric for us. And this is where we can show you what, what that median value home is doing from 2012 to 2022. And then we show you what the impact on city taxes has been, the green line, and the total tax load for that property is the dark line above that. This is the, some of the councils a few years ago asked us if we would track the value of a, instead of the median single-family home, a $400,000 home. So this is what the property tax burden is for a $400,000 home over the time period from 2005 to 2022. It's been fairly flat, as you can see. And this is another one that councils asked us to do, trying to do a CPI-adjusted dollar. So this is in 20, this is $2003, adjusted for CPI, again, of the median, single-family home and our property tax burden on that home, starting in 2020, excuse me, 2010 out to 2022. As, as I said earlier, 2022 is an even-numbered year, so we've spent, spending a lot of our time on projected capital improvement plans and, and funding large capital improvement spending for the upcoming years. And one of those ways we do that is through our proposed property tax levy, a CIP levy. What we're showing here in this chart are, are number of debt service fund levies. So debt service is just the term that we use on, on the money that we're paying back, that we borrowed through a bond issue to build something typically. These are the city gyms, fire station number one, public works direct, public works maintenance facility, and the sports dome. And, and we're also taking a look at our fire station number two, and what the debt service might be on that. That's not incurred at this point, but we are trying to make some estimates for that. The next set of levies are levies that we're using for capital plan, capital improvement planning. These are, these are relatively new levies, and what this has been is a city council's, a reflection of the city council's preference that we plan and, and we fund our capital spending and capital improvements over the years, and make them dependable tax levies from year to year, so that we can program these dollars, and we can repair and maintain public facilities all over the, all over the community. We also have an equipment levy that we use for all of our rolling stocks, so all of our IT, all of our moving equipment, cars, trucks, et cetera. In this line, we show the special street levy. This is a result of a policy discussion and decision by the city council just a couple of years ago to begin moving the community away from, from special assessment-funded, um, street improvements and toward a system where we levy for those projects over the year and have less of a reliance on special assessments. So one of the things you'll see in this levy going forward, and you can see it on this chart, that it increases a little bit every year. It started at $950,000 in 2022, and in this chart, you can trace it all the way out to 2029, where it's scheduled to be $2.9 million. And the other, the last item on this chart, and the construction fund levy, is the special park improvement levy. And this is, again, a levy that, that we are trying to work with council to figure out how to do additional funding of park, particularly park improvements and park infrastructure. And this is a way that we can do that and still not produce a, a, a large incremental tax impact on our residents. So next steps for us tonight is we are asking council to certify the preliminary tax levy tonight. We need you to do that to, so that we can stay within Minnesota law in terms of the timeline that we have to have it certified by. Based on council input, we're going to continue to refine our budget. We'll continue to do that all the way up to December, our, our December 20th council action. The last council meeting of the year is typically when you approve that, the council's budget. And finally, that, and that, all of this is kind of, is a crescendo all the way up to December 6th, when we have a special public hearing where we take input from, from the public and comments about the public, and really make some kind of final decisions on our budget. And I've got, we're, we're all happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you. Questions for Manager Neal or Director McAndrews? Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So I've got two questions. One is for the public who are looking at the local option sales tax. That's for the Braemar Master Plan and the Fred Richards Master Plan. How is this $1 million levy different from that?
Yes, that's a great question, Councilmember Jackson. Thank you. This is the, what we're looking at in terms of, of this proposed $1 million special park improvement levy, this will handle our, our neighborhood parks, improvements to our neighborhood parks. So playground replacement, park shelter replacement, and other kind of playground and, and park improvements that are not large enough to, to fit within that local option sales tax portfolio. Really, those two areas where we're going to be spending that money if residents approve that initiative, Braemar Park and, and Fred Richards Park really had to fit a definition of regional park and had to appeal to not just people in Edina, but people outside of Edina. And they were, state legislature defined that and told us that they fit that definition. So the, the park funds, the, the park projects that would be funded with levy are outside of that group.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, one of the things, going back to the increase in valuation, seems to me that during COVID, a lot of people got building permits to upgrade their homes. And it seemed, my impression is that the city of Edina is really continually investing in our, in our redevelopment, whether it's in our own home with a new deck or with new buildings coming in. Is some of the increase of value due to greater, to investment that we have in our city?
Oh, certainly. When you think about the size of our valuation, so we're, we're at 15 billion right now, a really great year of new construction will be 300 million, right? So, so even 300 million doesn't really move $15 billion very far. So one of the bigger things that happens is, as you described, a lot of small improvements to a lot of properties all over the community. So that does add up.
Okay. So it's not just inflation. It's, it's increased value by reinvesting in our city?
Right. There's, there's small projects to existing homes. There are, there's new construction, and then there's the baseline increase for all properties in the city.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Member Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, you answered, actually, part of the question I had about what does the taxpayer get for another $1 million. So thank you for that. I wonder if you could just comment briefly on the reduction in the tax rate, which most people would be very happy to hear, that we're going to spend more money and receive more money, but taxes can actually go down. I think that's an important note.
It's, thank you, Councilmember Anderson. It's not intuitive. So I, we try to figure out different ways to say it, but another way to say it is to take a look at the tax rate. Our tax rate in 2022 is 28.934%. In 2023, if, if council ultimately approves the tax levy increase that we're proposing, it'll be, the rate will go down to 28.033. And that's how, that's the, you know, in terms of, of taking a stab at what your taxes, your tax liability might be, that's a real, that's a key, that's a key metric there to figure that out. So a tax rate times estimated market value is, is your, or times your tax capacity equals your tax burden.
Essentially, it's a bigger pie.
Yeah, we have a bigger pie. A bigger pie with more people contributing to that pie.
The only comment I'd make, because we're, as, you know, as we look at this preliminary budget tonight, is we are making a jump. I mean, no question about that. And I, we're all cognizant of the inflationary economy that we live in. And I, I just want to encourage, encourage staff to grind on this budget going forward before we look at the final. I, I think that, number one, just energy alone, which is an enormous underlying driver of inflation, that's going to affect city operations, it's going to affect public works, it's going to affect many, many things. And so we can't really have a, a plan to get, when we get out there. So I think it's necessary to grind on it now to try to get this thing down to exactly what we need. And, and also making the investments that are necessary, because part of the inflationary thought pattern is, the things that we agreed to do today may cost considerably more in the future. Earlier tonight, we agreed to not accept a proposal on some, some infrastructure work, essentially left turn lanes at Sunny Slope and, and Vernon. And so we did that because the request for proposal came in at 100% above what was expected. That's not 10%, not 20%, it's 100% above. And I, I have a sense that we may see more of that kind of phenomenon. It may not be 100%, but if we start looking at operating expenses and find that we get into the 20% or 25% or 30% by June or July of 2023, then we will look back at this time and say, gee whiz, how, what, what could we have done about it? So I just encourage that more than anything else. Thank you.
We will. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd add my voice to my colleagues. I, I think one of the things that I've noted since I've been on the council is we have, when we do our capital improvement plan every year, we have a, a real challenge with funding things other than our utility budgets, our sewer, our water, our storm sewer. We do a nice job of that because we can calibrate that, and we have a statutory authority to raise that money and pay for those utilities. But the thing that ends up being challenging is our park assets. And so in the past, we've done everything from try to, you know, there was, when the waters was approved, we got a nice park dedication fee, and we were able to do something over it at Countryside Park. When, when we did the Sports Dome, we were able to add a little bit to the bonding and do something to Pamela Park. And, and so it's just been opportunity, and those are great. But we're, we've been asking, I think, in those last seven or eight years for, for more sustainable funding sources. And, and we've done some of that with the capital improvement levy that has been instituted. And I like the creative approach here. The question, you know, is whether, whether that makes sense. And I think what you're asking us tonight to do is give us a couple of months to think about whether this kind of extraordinary increase is worth seizing this opportunity to try and fund some extra.
That's right. Well said.
And, and I'm willing to, to do that for a couple of months. As, as, as Councilmember Anderson says, we grind through this and try to get the input of our colleagues who are not here tonight. I can hear Mayor Hovland as I'm speaking. And so I, I think it's, I like the creativity, and I like the fact that we can kind of compound our money if we get it in now, because it'll continue to grow over time. But at the same time, I'm cognizant of the fact that it's real money, and it's in a time when people are feeling stressed by the economy, and so we need to be cognizant of that, too. So I, any further questions from my colleagues? All right. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2022-84, adopting the proposed preliminary budget and establishing the proposed tax levy payable in 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
I actually have a question. Can we take comments on Better Together about this?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I think that might be a wise thing to do.
Yeah, over the course of the next couple of months.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah.
All right, terrific. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Pose. All right. Thank you, Alicia. All right. Next up is Commission Correspondence. We have minutes from the Energy and Environment Commission and the Parks and Rec Commission meetings in August. Any discussion on those items? All right. Next is manager comments. Mr. Neal?
No comments from me tonight.
All right. Mayor and council?
Well, I'd like to hear from Chief Milburn about Friday night, if we could.
All right, there you go.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Members of council, Chief Milburn, who was typing something here on his computer. But we want to talk about the incident that happened earlier this week, right? And I just want to inform everyone that we are still involved in an active criminal investigation on that. But what's important to note is that as part of any criminal, active investigation, we learn details and circumstances that lead up or have led up to the event. And so as that continues to unfold, I also would like to point out that we are a partner with the school district, and we have reached out and will continue to dialogue with them to talk about security plans and how to make improvements to make it safe for all for future games moving forward as well. So those conversations are happening. And then lastly, I just want to point out that our officers did an outstanding job that night with the very difficult circumstances that, that unfolded. So thank you.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta investigate something that has happened, but also make sure we're making it safe in the future for people to be at football games and be at community events in our city. So thank you for that.
Thanks.
Further comments? Member Jackson?
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you. So on last Friday, was it Friday? No. It was, I can't even remember the date. The, oh, the bike trail. And it was great. So the Three Rivers Park District had a nice little gathering down at the swamp, and, and the beautiful trail that leads over it. And John Gibbs, Commissioner John Gibbs, gave a few words and, and wanted to credit John Gunyou, who's the chair of the Nine Rivers Park District, for his tireless work. And it's really been a long process to get this done. It's now complete, and it's, it was budgeting. So MINDOT made the decision to put the tunnel on then 169 reconstruction, but they made that decision too late for the park district to budget the path. So we got the tunnel, and then we got the path, and now it's all complete, and it's beautiful. And if you haven't been down there to see it, I strongly encourage everybody to hop on their bike or to walk down there. It's, it's really something, and it connects you nicely with the trail leading into Hopkins and, and really connects us regionally. So that was exciting. The other thing I want to mention to all of the student commissioners who, for the years, on the Energy and Environment Commission have said, "We got to tell the state and the federal government to worry about climate change." The state came out with their climate action plan last week, and it, for our purposes, it covers real estate development and land use and transportation and stormwater management. And I think we'll be getting help from the state on some of the efforts that we've been doing, especially hopefully with the stormwater management. So I'm, I'm looking forward to learning more about what they want to do. But to, to my former student commissioners, congratulations. So thank you. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Member Anderson?
Thank you. I wanted to thank Chief Milburn for the update on your investigation, because it's an important one, as I know that you accept. And I also want to mention that I know that the community has great confidence in you and the department. And so I, you went through a little bit there on Friday night. There's been a lot of film that floats around the community at this time. City council has viewed some of it. It's, it's a serious matter. What, what we have seen in the course of the last several months is, we've seen youth behavior on the, I think, on, on the wrong side of what we would expect. And this is, this one maybe is out of character for what we have seen in the past, but significant in, in many ways. And I, I, I know that this is under investigation. I know that you can't say more than you have. What I would say is that we want to be able to, at the earliest possible moment, we want to be able to reassure the public. There is a concern, as there has been for some time, about crime, not only in our community but in the metro. And every time it comes forward, it, it unnerves people a bit more. We passed a resolution on a council level in the past, crime resolution. We, we are serious about it. We mean business. And I, I'm trusting that whatever occurred there can be brought to, brought to full explanation. Thank you.
So just a couple of things that I wanted to add. One is picking up on Member Jackson's comments on the completion of the trail. I, I think it's appropriate to recognize how long these things take. Now, Mayor Hovland, of course, was on the council when that happened, but none of the rest of us were. And I think it would be Josh Sprague, Joni Bennett, Mary Brindle. And I think it would be Josh Sprague, Joni Bennett, Mary Brindle, Ann Swenson, Scott House. You know, those folks all were the ones who kind of started that. And much like my discussion last week, my comments last week about Arden Park, it wasn't easy at the time. It was really, really hard for folks to, to say yes to that, and it was hard work. And, and so thank them tonight for the completion of that. That was, that was courageous work on their part. And in an effort to hopefully have my name mentioned along with that in the future, I want to thank Manager Neal and Director Milner for starting the work on the West Promenade near 40, 40, 70th Street. I think that's going to be a great project in the future, and I hope that, I hope that we can make that possible. I know the folks in that neighborhood are going through a lot of angst right now, as people do when buildings struck, you know, building projects are going on, and, and it's noisy, and it's disruptive, and it's hard. But, but hopefully, we're going to make a better place over there, and that's one way to do it, is with that kind of stuff. So I applaud your efforts to keep plowing ahead on that and engage those neighbors, and hopefully we'll, we'll get there on that. So, so lots of long horizons in the community, and, and it's all good. All right, any further comments? We could hang around, but I think I'm winning the under. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.